Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us for a study session today. This is regarding the property sale homes. Mr. Fayez from Century 21 accompanied by his father, Mike Fayez, and Ali Fayez. I'm sorry, Real Estate One. This guy taught me remix. This guy taught me Century 21. Real Estate One was not, did not receive the email for the, you know, the failed discrepancy of spelling Fayz, F-A-Y-Z. He spelled it F-A-Y-S. And then the second time when we showed up at the meeting, I think, you know, the communication also from back. So here we are, the third time's the charm. And I know that they're here to present. Like the others, we have a 15-minute period, which Councilman Ahmad will be in charge of the time. And, you know, we can then ask any questions and we can open it to the council and then we take an open to the residents. I see our honorable clerk is not here today, but I see her that she's online. So Lynn George, the clerk's office, thank you for all that you guys do.
Okay, Council Chair.
Yep.
Good evening. I don't know if this is on.
It's on. I hear it.
Oh, okay. The light don't work. All right, so we have the company that was rated number two.
Just raise it up a little bit, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sure. So this is the, in the order we've presented before, the four, selected the top four firms. Real Estate One, a 2.5% fee plus transfer tax is the second rated company. And so things to remember, we had four before, and then this is number two. And as I said, Mr. Fayez is here to go over his proposal. It was a proposal, it wasn't a bid. And he speaks, so if you notice that I wrote that the work plan was included. So with that in mind, I'd like to introduce Mr. Fayez.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, sir.
Hopefully everyone's doing great. I am from Real Estate, I just want to clarify that.
I'm sorry, man, please forgive, this guy taught me remix.
No, no, you're fine. I appreciate you finally getting the opportunity.
I wrote an R.
I'm gonna do a little bit of introduction about myself, about our brokerage. So myself, you know, my name's Ali Fayez. I joined Real Estate in 2018. My father right there, Mike, Hajmike's been in the business since late 80s, early 90s, so over 35 years in the business himself. 2004, he founded Real Estate One Dearborn Heights here in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, on Ford Road and Silver Lane. As someone deeply experienced in managing and selling government and institutional owned properties, I understand the critical importance of strategic transparency as well as well structured approach to these assets. At Real Estate One Dearborn Heights, our expertise in this sector spans decades, over 25 years of handling exclusive contracts with Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, the Department of Veteran Affairs, Citibank, and numerous other institutions. Overseeing everything from property assessments and occupancy determinations to valuation and auction-style sales. With over 1.2 billion in total sales, 350 million of which are directly from government, municipal, and institution-owned properties. Our firm has solidified its reputation as one of the most accomplished brokerages in this region when it comes to these properties. Myself joined in 2018, like I said, after graduating from Wayne State University. I specifically have overseen the VA, which is the Veteran Administration Properties Division, managing the entire process from the initial assessment to the final sale. So that's just a little bit about ourselves. I'm gonna go next into the marketing and for sale process for these city-owned properties. So the city itself, I would consider it a government body. We would mimic it how we do currently with some of these other sales. When marketing to these properties to the public, we would implement a clear and effective strategy, similar to our approach with the bank-owned and VA properties. Highly visible signage would be placed on each property, featuring a scannable QR code that directs potential buyers to the dedicated bidding platform. This online portal would provide all necessary details, including property information, photos, valuation reports, and auction terms ensuring transparency and ease of access. To encourage homeownership and community investment, we propose a phased approach for the sale of the residential properties. The first 15 to 30 days would be given priority access to veterans, senior citizens, and owner occupants. This would ensure secure group housing for residents of this area, as well as fostering a long-term community stability. Would then open it up to public buyers. After the priority access period, any unsold properties would be made available to all buyers, including investors and non-owner occupants. The bidding platform would remain active, allowing competitive and transparent process for final sales. The structured timeline ensures that the city-owned properties contribute to homeowner, neighborhood growth, and stability while maintaining an efficient and accessible sales process. Now, just the active properties and recent sales, I asked for some descriptions. These are some Fannie, Freddie, and government institutional properties. One right here down the street, 6833 Fenton, it was a Fannie Mae property, recently sold several months back. And there's a few other examples of that as well on there. That's my proposal. Just going over the RFP as well, I mean, some of the most important criteria in the RFP, and number one in the scope of work, was having experience with government and municipal properties. I can say that with confidence, there's no one outside of several other brokerages that have not put up a bid, no one who has put up a bid who does it, who has done as many and who has done as many in the city of Dearborn Heights as we have. I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate finally getting the chance to speak in front of Council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fayez. You can pause this time. I am then gonna open up the table to any questions or any concerns from any Council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fayez, for being here. I know you mentioned something about platform you're gonna be using. Can you tell me more about it?
Yeah, so it'd be a direct bidding platform. So what it'd be is each property would feature a...
Just sit, just a little slower, one more time for the record.
Sure. At each property, so you'd have a sign, I'm sure you're aware, you have a sign.
Do you already have this platform, or are you gonna...
No, we would establish it for this specific.
Oh, okay.
Similar to how Auction.com does it for the bank-owned and VA and Fannie Mae. So what we would do is we'd establish a website where they'd scan the information, it'd take them directly to the website, which has all the information, bidding processes. I know that, it doesn't mean it directly would be bid through there, but there would be bidding packets if they decided to do a formal bidding packet, that'd be turned into the City Hall. So it'd give all the information, photos of the home, detailed description, as well as valuations.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilman Wansel.
Thank you. You mentioned something about the Veterans Affairs Commission and...
Yes, sir.
How would you promote sale these homes to veterans?
So what we would do is, in our marketing process, we'd directly reach out to many veteran associations in the local area, give them the first opportunity to come see these homes, let them know that that's gonna be our process, as well as going outside the city with our traditional marketing.
And your experience with dealing with veterans?
Yes, sir. We handle specific, we have a veteran, we have a contract with the VA, with the Veterans Administration, so we handle all of their disposal assets as well.
What kind of benefits do veterans have that are unique to them?
So if you're a wounded veteran, you are, you get, do a tax deferment. If you are 100% disabled, you do get that tax deferment. So as well as, I mean, giving the veterans an opportunity with a VA loan in today's market as a Realtor, it's competitive and you're less likely to get your offer accepted if you're up against conventional offers or cash offers. So giving these veterans a first opportunity, letting them use that VA loan, which allows them to put no money down, or little to no money down, give them that opportunity where they can find a home, especially our own residents who are veterans.
Yeah, that's a good idea. My parents, that's how my parents bought their house, because my dad was a veteran years ago. So that's a good program.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, and you made a good point when you said like VA loans, government loans, like FHA or VA usually don't get the first opportunity.
Correct.
Somebody wants to take a conventional, when, you know, you set these type of rules and restrictions, saying, hey, we're offering it to a VA client, VA pre-approval letter now, it's like, okay, great.
It holds a lot more value, you know, and I wish it, everyone's approval, you know, especially veterans, was, you know, looked at first. But unfortunately, when some people are selling, they look at what's gonna get them to the closing table the quickest. With, you know, the city being the owner of the assets, you know, giving the veterans the time they need, I know those loans sometimes take longer, but it's a great opportunity for the veterans to create a city.
Council Chair.
Yeah, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. I think the only issue we're gonna have with veteran loans, that most of these properties have been vacant for years, and it's not gonna be up to the veterans, to the VA code.
Well, before I pause you there, I think we agreed about, you know, three to five of the properties are gonna be given.
Doug, this is a different story, but we're talking about marketing to the veterans, while most of these properties, probably it's not gonna be approved VA loan, because...
Well, we don't know the, I mean, we haven't seen these properties.
I'm just saying, I don't...
We will determine, I mean, if we're given the opportunity, we'll be able to determine which properties are gonna be qualifiable for the VA loans. I mean, the same thing FHA, as well as, you know, there's FHA inspections, but if we can give the opportunity to the veterans first, we have several properties that are deemed, you know...
I would say probably FHA would be the same thing, unless if they're going FHA 40, FHA 203K.
203K. You know, exactly, that's what I'm saying, but we don't know which properties, I mean, you might know, as, you know, being on Council, you might know which ones are livable and non-livable.
I don't even know which property we're selling. To be honest with you, I don't know.
There was a list.
I wish I knew, it could have been easier.
There was a list that was emailed to us. There was a list that was emailed to us from Ariana, she did email it to us.
Oh, yeah? Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
When was, do you know the date of that email?
Is it narrowed down, or? I know that I had the big list.
She sent us a big list.
I don't know which one they're selling.
She emailed it to us, she emailed to the entire Council.
Yeah, we have that list, but I don't know which one we're selling exactly.
Oh, the damn list. Because remember, some of them say, that some of them belong to Tifa.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, we don't know exactly which ones they are, we don't know which ones are vacant, which ones are, but she did give us the list.
Council Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
Fill me in on some information about a VA loan. Now, say a property, attractive property in good condition, in today's market, they typically go into a bidding war.
Correct.
And VA, they wouldn't do anything like that, would they? They'd just pay market value and that's it? Or how's that work?
I mean, they could pay above, but the conditions that you would have, I mean, when in today's market, you have a lot of the conventional offers, they'd be waiving inspection or waiving an appraisal. With the VA loan, you don't have the ability to waive the inspection, you have the VA inspection, which is a government inspection, it's mandatory. So it's, you're unable to make those, jump those hoops and those loopholes just to be able to get the home compared to the conventional or the cash buyer. As well as conventional, they're putting a substantial amount of money down, sometimes they exploit the process, sometimes they may put a larger deposit down to make the attractive offer to the seller. Unfortunately, with VA, they don't have that option every time. But, you know, it's a great opportunity for somebody who's served. You're able to purchase a home, you're able to get some tax benefits, you're able to purchase it with little to no money down, which is great. And if there are homes that are suitable for residents, and they do pass that mandatory inspection, I'd say why not give them to our veterans first? No one deserves it more.
You know, I'd like to see something, and I don't know how you'd go about doing it, but I know we plan on actually like giving some homes to some disabled veterans, and you mentioned that somebody that's totally disabled, a veteran, would be taxed, except from state tax.
Yep.
Is it, I mean, this body'd have to determine this, but maybe we could sell an additional few properties that would be like, not a bidding war, but say we're asking 150,000 for it, and it's open for the veterans to purchase, and put that in the lottery, and letting them, you know, because some of them would, in today's market, you know how it goes way over market value.
Correct.
And that way we could have a couple that veterans can, that wanna actually purchase, would have the opportunity to purchase that asking price.
Yeah, so what we would do is we would allow in the first two weeks, 15 days, just to those veterans. So they would be the only ones shopping at this home, so you're still able...
Yeah, but if one veteran wants to give more than another veteran, like...
Exactly. So those veterans are still able, I mean, they're competing amongst each other, so it's not like one can do much more than the other, all depends on their strength of their approval. But then it's just the veterans who are looking to buy this property, no one else would be involved. Any assets that no veteran does purchase, say it's a, you know, a vacant piece of land, and neither an owner occupant next door doesn't wanna purchase it after those 30 days, it would then be open to the public. So investor who's looking to develop, or just non-owner occupant, which then would bring in tax revenue for the city.
Have you had experience with owner-occupant sales?
Of course.
Now, how do you monitor that?
In regards to...
Say if I buy a home, and whatever criteria is set for the person to buy it, to buy it and occupy it for one year, or, you know, six months, or 18 months, or something like that, I mean, and how, I mean, how do you regulate or keep track of that?
So it'd be through the tax filing, if it's homesteaded or not, and then the taxpayer address and the mail going to that address. So with like the VA and Fannie and Freddie, some of those, they require owner-occupant, and they will continuously check in year to year, just to make sure for the first three years it's still owner-occupied. It's not, you know, somebody bought on an owner-occupant, the next year they turned around and they, you know, had it as an investment, stuff of that nature.
All government, all government loans are, for most, actually, all government loans are owner-occupant. So if you're buying it under an FHA or VA loan, you have to be owner-occupant, you can't buy it as an investor.
Well, I'm assuming it's pretty tough to keep track of all this home sales.
I mean, that's not gonna be on a job. Once, once, you know, if Ali were to sell it and he sells it, Ali's not gonna come back two years later to check and say, okay, I wanna make sure that this tenant is still there. If the person that buys it, say six months later says, hey, I mean, the reality is, I don't want this house no more, I don't like the neighborhood, and they sell it, and they sell it to an investor, unless there's like a deed restriction, this may be something that Councilman Ahmad can answer, unless you apply a deed restriction, I know Westland does that, where they put in maybe like a four-year deed restriction that the property can only be sold. So knowing that when you buy the house, you're buying it under a deed restriction that states, you know, it's gonna stay, you know, owner-occupied for the next five years, or whatnot. I mean, I don't know.
Correct.
That's where that committee eventually can come up and make these...
Right. This is something, Council Chair, this is something that we can set, Councilman, but I'm, I know you guys, you're not gonna like what I'm saying, but those properties, they've been vacant for years. So sadly, they're not gonna be approved VA or FHA. Then, the only property you're gonna give to the VA, to the veterans, is the property you're gonna give them for free. But to have a veteran buy it on a VA loan, it's not gonna happen. Those properties has no utilities, they'll be vacant for years, they're not in a condition to be approved either FHA or VA. That's what I keep saying, but the only property you're gonna be able to give for veterans is the one you're gonna give for free. They can buy, but probably gonna have to buy through a conventional mortgage.
FHA 203K.
Or FHA 203K. FHA 203K is a rehab loan, which means they give you the money to buy the property, plus money to fix it. But regular VA or FHA, those properties not gonna be able to be financed that way.
Do we know if they're, that these properties are in such disarray that they would not qualify for those loans?
Well, first of all, if you need to go FHA or VA, you need to turn water and utilities on these properties. Are we willing to do that as a city? I doubt it.
With Fannie, Freddie, and bank-owned properties, we require all purchasers to turn on the utilities themselves, we put in a request. So that's something we can mimic the process, where they turn it on, but they have to turn it back off. So they have to turn it on in their name and they have to turn it back off, so they'd be responsible for any fees and any costs.
Yeah, we could...
That's what we do currently, so it's a promise. Like I said, we've done over 2,500 institution, municipality, and bank-owned properties. It's something we do on a daily basis, over 20 a law a month. So it's something we can mimic the process, I know it's different slightly, some of these properties might not be livable, some of them might be vacant land, which we've done all of the above. So it's not nothing that's new to us, I'd love to sit down, if you have any questions yourself, I could give you my email address, we could take, jump on a call, and I'd love to divulge into it further and give you some more help, information.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman Conson.
What about title insurance? You're gonna worry about that after you get a buyer?
I, to my understanding, they just said they're gonna leave title to put it out for bid. So I mean, they title, what we put in here is the seller or the city is responsible for the 2.5% plus transfer tax, title isn't on the buyer, so that would be on the buyer. So to my understanding, the city was gonna put it up for bid, so I couldn't answer that.
And title always uses, I mean, buyers always have to have their own title policy. So like, it's nothing new on a transaction.
Especially with these properties.
Mr. Deeb, I got a question. Are we, as a municipality, a city, maybe, I don't know how you can answer this, Councilman Ahmad, are we exempt from transfer taxes because we're a government entity?
Not that I know of.
Cause...
None of that, no. I'm not sure, but I'm looking at prior... We weren't exempt.
No, because the transfer taxes goes to the state than the county.
Council Chair.
Yes. Are we responsible for title insurance if these are all forfeited properties, right, Mr. Deeb, or does title insurance still...
So part of the discussion that Mr. Ahmad and I were having today...
You're who, Mr. Who?
Hassan Ahmad.
Ahmad, Hassan Ahmad. We had, we had that discussion, trying, for me to learn, basically, since this is not my, and he's the alpha of information, on the title, because I'm finding out that most of this property, and I don't have an exact number, but a large number, a percentage of it, came to us in a quitclaim deed. So quitclaim deed is not a title, right? So I'm trying to learn if, so that's...
So it's a form of ownership, but it comes with many, many things with it.
So, this is how explained to me, that doesn't mean that if he has a mechanic's lien on the title, it may be transferred. And again, you know, this is something that we need to address.
Council Chair, but aren't, Mr. Deeb, aren't these forfeited properties that the city took over? Do we still need title insurance on that?
So the city received them from the county under the first right of refusal.
Like through forfeiture process.
Years ago, I don't know how many, but it's been lingering for a while. Again, the county transferred them to us in a quitclaim deed. That means, according to the experts here, that if you owe money, if there's something owed on that property, and then you transferred it that way, now you're on the hook for that money.
No, but the county forfeited, and did, before they issued the quitclaim deeds, right? Forfeiture process. So they wiped out any, any kind of leads outstanding, right?
No. No, the county still wants its, its money.
So, not the county's money, but if, let's say, a developer had some lien against the property from five years ago, is that something that the new owner that I sell it to is on the hook to pay? That's, that's the point.
Under a quitclaim deed, yes.
No, not if it's gone through forfeiture.
Honestly, I can't even, I don't even know what's being said. This is probably something if, probably you wanna check into it, maybe take one of the property, Mr. Deeb, maybe give them one of the properties.
In September, the forfeitures, the liens transferred, the October forfeitures, when it comes to us, and we have, before I have first refusal, usually wipes out everything else, then they issue quitclaim deed to us. I did a memo a few years ago when I first started on, with the county, with Eric Sabri, and I ran it by their legal department, I'll pull that up again to make sure, but I thought with these forfeited properties, title insurance and all that, that wouldn't be necessary.
So part, part of what Councilman Saab was asking us to do, to do an RFP for the title work, part of it was that discussion that we were having today, so we know what exactly are we asking them for. And I'm trying to learn myself, because that's not, you know...
Because every buyer who's gonna buy on a mortgage, the lender, they're not gonna accept a quitclaim deed. You can add transfer property on a quitclaim deed.
So, Councilman, if I go to the bank for a conventional loan to buy the property...
Yeah, they're gonna ask for a warranty deed.
I need to ask.
Correct. Or covenant deed, they're not gonna, they're not gonna accept quitclaim deed.
Quitclaim deed.
Yeah, so that's why we need, that's why we need title insurance.
Guys, hang on one second. It seems to me like if we are gonna do what Councilman Saab, we need to put that in there. So basically, I need to find out what, how many of these properties have actual titles, and how many have quitclaim deed, and get a price for the quick, you named, you called it something else, black title or something?
Quiet title.
Quiet title.
A tax deed.
Quiet title is another term I just learned today, so, yeah, so we'll need to ask for a price from the title vendor to provide us with a quiet title, meaning that if I buy that property, I'm assured that I don't owe $100,000 to Mr. Saab.
I think if we did a cash, Council Chair, cash transaction, that would take care of it, handle it.
I'm gonna hear from the gentleman, Mr. Fayez, who's been doing this since 1981, before...
89. Thank you. Mike Fayez, Beach Daily, Dearborn Heights. And correct, Council Roger, when you get a property through the county on a quitclaim deed, anything prior to that date, it get wiped out. So the title is very much gleaned, to get a title policy. Do the purchaser have the option to get a title of their own? Yes. And if these property are longer than five years old, every title company gonna give you a title policy. Because the process of a foreclosure, all the bank cares or the title company, when they foreclose on that particular property, did the owner of that property get a property notified? So they'll have to clear, they call a cloud title. Then you gotta clear the title. But if you call every title company in town, and you tell them those property been owned by the city or the county more than five years, they'll give you a title policy. They have no problem at all. But anything prior to the county, it gets to be wiped out with the council.
That's the thing, Mr. Fayez, we don't know the dates, we don't know when they were acquired, we don't know how they, some of them from the county, some of them, I'm not sure. So all this information, we don't have like a real estate department in the city to go all over this information. So that's why you're gonna have different examples. You're gonna have some from the county, some of them, like you said, five years, some of them last, some of them last year, so we don't know. That's the thing, we need probably a title company to go through them, and...
Well, I think to get it in order, you're just elaborating what you had said, it'd been for a long time sitting there. If they've been five years, we don't know, but everyone has to be...
Because I don't think they were obtained at the same time, were they?
No, they're very, they're old, they are.
Yeah, but even if you gotta get a cloud title, it's not hard to get a cloud title. A lot of title company, I had sold recently property on a foreclosure in the Wayne County, and they foreclosed on it a year ago, and the title company was willing to insure the property. All they have to do is, you know, buy for the record of the county that they owe property the...
Yeah, do the for your request.
If they buy, if they for the record and they owe property notified, title company will insure it. And you can get your own title, but the buyer can get a title. Even if you're very well experienced Realtors, you know HUD does not even give you a title. If you wanna get your own title, you go get it. Even Freddie Mac, we give you a title on the property. When we sell a Freddie Mac property, the seller provide title, but if the buyer wants it, they won't pay for it. Because they deal with title company enough, they give enough with a title company fee, very comfortable. And if it's city-owned property, I can't see any title company gonna...
No, not 100%, but like you see the council here, they're trying to push for homeowner-occupants as much as possible, not investors. I mean, all day long, whatever you're saying, we're gonna, we're able to sell them to investors, but they wanna sell to homeowners-occupant.
And let me tell you why this council's pushing that so hard. There has been such an influx, one, we wanna see more, more community, family-oriented, you know, and I'm not saying that renters are not. What tends to happen is renter will stay in here, after a couple of years, they'll neglect the house, the landlord will come in, they have to come back and fix it.
Council Chair. I object to characterization of all renters being this way, we can't separate...
There are some, okay, homeowners and renters, a lot of people do that. What we're just trying to say is, we'd like to see these homes be as owner-occupiers as first. We've seen in the past where, one, 16 properties, at the last, the last time this was brought up when I was on Council, 16 properties went for $11,000. That's not fair. And they were told that these were gonna go to owner, they're gonna, they're gonna fix to fix these properties, and they were going to flip them to owner occupy. And there's no proof that any of that happened.
Well, if you offer that, you did answer that question, where you said, how can, and also Council Denise wanted to know, what can you, they sign affidavit, there's a standard affidavit form for every buyer, that you intend to buy and occupy that home. Yeah, are they going to live in it a year, two, six months? He had one baby, all of a sudden his wife got pregnant, or his mother is going to live with him, they're going to move out? How can you really track down this? But as long as they sign affidavit, that they're going to be living in it, and they intend to live in it. And it's all based on the condition of the property. We don't know what the property, we don't know if anything qualifies, but the one qualified to get more detailed and more concrete answer would probably, those property has to be viewed and a recommendation made. Yes, you got five, 10 property, they could be owner occupant with no issue, and the rest of them might not be. But it's you set, you know, the guidelines, how would you want it, and they all could be accommodated. It's not, you know, every financial institution, they set those, we want, and the reason they do that for owner occupant, and that's a question you both council, you all were concerned, is the competition out there. It's a very high competition out there, and a lot of people, when you come in with a VA loan or FHA loan, they don't want to sell it. They want to go with the cash and move on. But when you set the guidelines and you want an owner occupant, you want this, you want this, that's it. Those people have to bid on it.
I mean, I see no problem selling it to investors for them to rehab. I said, myself, I see no problem selling it to investor, but we can put a deed restriction for them to rehab and sell it to owner occupant after they rehab.
The problem is, we did that. How can you do that to sell? It's still the same thing. I mean, if there's some property, I don't know how many property we're talking about, how many we have, 10, 20, 100? I don't know. I don't even know how many property.
Council Chair.
More than one.
I didn't want to interrupt. So part of the discussion, Councilman, as you recall, we were talking, we were looking at a large number of empty parcels. Some of these parcels are buildable, some are not. The buildable parcels are the ones that we wanted to say, look, Dearborn had it 365, you have to have a full CFO on that piece of property and sold to owner occupied. Maybe we can do something like this. We will sell it to you as an investor with an idea that you're going to develop it, have a CFO in hand, sold to owner occupied in 365 days. That's how Dearborn did it. I thought that was.
That's an option, yeah.
You know, it's an option.
I think that's a good option, and these, the guidelines has to be set by the council, how you want it. We can deliver it, we can make sure it get done. It is something extremely familiar, but how the guidelines, you want to do it. Every municipality does it different, every, but they all, at the end of the day, they have you sign affidavit, you're going to live in it. Now, are you going to be checking every year and counsel, but you said, there's no way you can track that.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, Councilman, Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, last time we had a program like this, we did sell to a group of investors that did qualify. I think there was like seven or eight of them. They had to go through a process, and the deal was they had to rehab the houses, and those houses did come out beautiful. They really just went through new furnace, new central air, knew everything. And there was some kind of restriction that was signed. Gary Miyake made the contract up because I had someone that had to sell theirs, and it was, it was somehow deed restricted, or there was a restriction on it. I don't know if we can go back and check the paperwork, but there was a restriction, and there was supposed to be a release after the person was living in it, and it wasn't, you know, finalized, and so they had to go back through Gary to be able to sell it down the road. But they did, it was owner occupied.
Hang on one second.
What you could place that restriction to answer that, to sell it to an investor, in return, investor has to sell to owner occupied.
Right, that's what they did.
You could put those restriction in there.
Yeah, there was.
It's the guidelines has to be established by the seller, what you, the council, have to establish.
Yeah, because our former.
But that could be done.
Yeah, our former corporate council, Gary Miyake, did draw up some kind of paperwork, and I know it was really, really strict, where they couldn't just sell it in the end, they had to make sure that the person was living in it, and they did.
And you could do that.
Council Chair.
And you could do that.
I heard, I am going to let you, just let them finish.
No, I'm addressing that.
I know, she's not, let them finish. The gentleman's speaking, and she's speaking, then I'll get to you.
You will?
I will get to you, yes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're very welcome. I believe I said that to you like three times.
I've been trying to get through, I'm trying to address the issue while it's relevant.
That they're speaking, I don't want to interrupt them.
Well, if he has something to add to what we're discussing, I have a problem with that.
I will let him, I want to make sure that you guys can get it out, and then I'm going to say.
Corporate council, if you can add in on it.
Thank you. We just finished, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I'm talking to Councilwoman.
Oh, not me?
I was you, but we did three properties that we sold back in March of 2023, where we did the restrictive covenants on it. We had our assessor's office pull it, they brought a title company, we did a full research on it. We put a restrictive covenant in there that allowed us to, that property would be solely for homeowner occupied. So it has been done since Mr. Miyake by our, just a year or two ago. So it is possible, we have the language, we have the deeds, assessor's office assisted.
That is correct. The guideline has to be established, what route you're going to take. If you, we share, we just brainstormed ideas.
Absolutely.
But whatever is guidelines you want to establish, that would be publicized, and that's the guidelines that has to go.
Leave it to the experts, Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, just to add to what our corporation council said, there's a restriction in the deed, and if it's violated, like in the Detroit Land Bank, they take the property back. Property comes, the buyer forfeits the property if they don't live up to the deed restriction.
That's very standard. You could put, any, all these stipulations, you could put them in there.
True. Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you. You know, in the event these restrictions are put on there, and someone's violating it, they say they owner occupied, they buy it as owner, then they sell it or lease it out. Is it, I mean, is it up to the city to monitor that and take, take action against them, or who, who would be, whether to take action against them?
Well, I could tell you some of my experience for the last thirty-some years. Have some people violated, yes. Has the government cracked down on a few of them, yes. Have they took the property away from certain people, yes. Have they fined him, yes. But if they sign an affidavit, they're going to be living in the property. And they move in there, and they had two kids, and wife gets pregnant, and they have their third child, and only two-bedroom home, and they want to move to a third one nine months later, what are you going to do? They have reasonable explanation, they need to move on. Even FHA and DA loan, when you sign it to the government, you get those loan, you say you're going to live in it. But nobody ever lived thirty years. Ninety percent of them don't live thirty years. That's your intent, you want to live there, two, three years later, you get promotion, you want to move on, how can you restrict it? I think it will not withhold in court to restrict it the entire time. You know, that was their intention, they want to live in it, and they do in good faith comply. But do circumstance change over time? They do change, but you can't enforce that. I don't think anybody.
I respect you saying that, because that's the truth.
Yeah, they can't enforce this, there's, nobody can enforce it. And they're usually very honest, you know, majority of them, they're very, very honest. They're going to get one or two through the crack, but there's consequences. Are they going to do it? I don't believe anybody wants to attempt, because they're local, everybody knows each other here. We're not in a big field, we're a small field, everybody knows everybody.
Well, you know, ideally, most people in their community, homeowners, and I know there's people that can't afford a home, but with today's rent payments, they're like more than a mortgage payment would be.
That's correct, and it's going to continue.
You know, and it's only a problem of them getting a loan. So I mean, that's, we, ideally, we want homeowners, not to say anything bad about renters, because renters, there's a place for renters in every community, and the need for renters. I mean, some people are just starting out in their life, or you know, marriage or something, and they don't know where they're going to live, they want to rent a house. But another issue we're going to have is if someone buys one of these homes, the owner occupied, and then rents it out, not sells it, but rents it.
Yeah, but there's, it's not hard to find.
Yeah, I know, that's a, that's a, that's a situation we're in, a dilemma we're in on this.
Aren't we going to have it? I doubt if we ever going to have, if somebody fall into it, but it's very well known, you 're in a small city, you got a little city, right? It's a big city, but for us, everybody knows what houses we sold, and it's very much trackable. It's not, does not take very trackable, for a year or two, you can track it. If somebody intentionally buy it and sign those VA loan or FHA loan, he's in double trouble. He's in trouble with the city, and he's in trouble with the government loan.
Reliant, committing.
Yeah, because who's going to take that, under those kind of home? Why would they do this?
Is it legal to put out a public list of, of homes that, in this situation, have been bought or sold and say, you know, say, these cannot be rented, there's home, you know, owner occupied?
Well, you do, when you put that, when you put it in your marketing, that's only strictly owner-occupied property.
So if that's the case, if someone, my neighbor buys a house, and he buys, I don't know, he bought it on this program, and he goes there, fixes it up, and then he rents it out, I don't know, I don't know he was in this program where he can't rent it.
I'm sorry.
You know, how would you, you know, how would you monitor that?
We're not talking about your parent, we're talking, your neighbor, we're talking about the city-owned property.
Yeah.
We don't know what his situation is. He probably got a 20% loan, and he, conventional, they have every right to rent it out. But if they get government loan, you don't know if they got a government loan.
That's what I'm saying.
You wouldn't know that.
Yeah.
Because you're the neighbor next door, you don't know what kind of loan, you'd better be paid for it cash.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know if this guy that's moved in next to me is buying it from this program or buying it from anything.
But if they buy it from you, you the seller, the city, you would know.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, okay, some guy on the other side of the city that I don't know, his name.
Who wouldn't know?
Yeah.
That's confidential.
That's a dilemma we're in right now. We're trying to do this, I mean, are we spinning our wheels trying to do this?
No, because you're going to know. You the seller, when a loan, when an offer to purchase the property comes to you, it does specifically say what type of loan they get. So they saying, we get an FHA or VA, and there's only loans for owner-occupied property, cannot be invested. So you would know, plus, you're going to have an affidavit signed, and you'll move some kind of restriction that has to be owner-occupied.
Well, when we do this, we're going to have to stay on top of this and figure out, the commission we formed is going to have to come up with some strict guidelines that are, that are able to follow through on, not make-believe things that we would never be able to implement.
And that's why, Councilman, there's a committee.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what the committee is going to. We're going to make sure this committee sets the guidelines that they can actually implement, instead of making some farfetched.
Oh, trust me, she's right there, she's one of them.
Oh, no, we're going to let nothing go wrong.
No.
Not on our watch.
It can be traceable, but you cannot enforce it for 10 or 20 or 30.
Mike, I've been involved in reestablishing this commission on disability concerns, and one of the things I was thinking about was selling it to an investor, and have you dealt with these people that fix them up or own them and rent them to people with disabilities? Are there programs like that that?
Well, you can make any restriction, any incentive, as long as the investor get incentive. You can't sell it to an investor, an investor not going to make money. If you're going to choke the investor and tell them, okay, I'm going to sell you this for the top dollar, and I want you to make this property available for disabled people, I want them to rent it to disabled people, you're going to distract a lot of people. Yes, would you give the investor some incentive in exchange to make those property available only for disabled people? Yes, there's a consideration. And the council can answer that, because you can't put that kind of restriction, there's no incentive given to them. Unless you give them the property, and say, okay, I want you to rehab it, I want you to do this, do this, I don't know how much damage those property, are they $2,000 in damages or $50,000? Are the bikes burst? Is it leak? There's mold? We don't know if those property could be rehabbed. I don't know what we're talking about. To be specific, the best recommendation you can make is we have to get down to each property. Yes, you got those 100 property, 70 of them, you have no chance at all, but you have to sell them to the investor hypothetically. We don't know, or you might have 90, I don't know what, but those are going to be, look at the property first, and if you say it in an extremely bad shape, which we had property, sometime we have a property where it really need a lot of rehabbing, where the bank sells the note, they don't even foreclose on the property. They foreclose on it, you get six-month redemption, they say, we're going to sell the note, let Mr. Wenzel come in and deal with the tenant and deal with the owner, let him evict him, and let him take the property from them. So we don't know what each property is.
Mr. Deeb, will we, will you be able to provide the commission with a, God bless you, with a, with a ranking system like we rank our, rate our roads on these properties? I mean, if you get 50 properties, you know, 1 through 50, and the ones that are homes, you say, well, this one is in.
So what I was going to help the new committee before I, you know, wiggle out of this process is to, I asked the, I was going to ask the clerk for, to clear the issue with titles, do we actually have titles or quitclaim deed, one, and then, two, the list of the property, and I want to put them in two, three different categories, non-buildable lots, buildable lots, and homes. These are the categories. And then this way, you can clearly say, and then one last comment on the restrictions for owner occupied versus not owner occupied. I'm working with the building department, we have a system, the BSNA, it's pretty good. We track, we track locations on BSNA, we put, we can flag them for things like utility issues, non-buildable, owner occupied, things of that nature. So when they come to the building department to, to pull that non-owner occupied list, and it was sold as owner occupied, we have that flagged on that property. So, I mean, there are things that we can do internally, where, you know, and I'll be happy to provide them.
You guys, if you don't mind, Councilman, we don't even have to reinvent the wheel.
Sure.
Westland just went through this right now. Just go on Westland's website, there's restrictions, there's things. How about this, they even give owner occupants, like incentives, like you buy this house, we're going to give you $10,000 concessions, you know? So if you're buying that house, you know, the city bought for 5,000, you sold it to them for 180, they're saying, we're going to give it, we're going to give you the house, we're going to sell you the house for 180, but we're going to give you $10,000 to help out on your closing cost or whatnot.
Okay, so, but do you know the condition of these houses? If the house requires $50,000 worth of repairs, the 10,000.
I understand, but I'm saying, I'm sure, like, you know, Mr. Fays said, sure, 70 of them are bad, 30 of them are good. I mean, let's, let's look at the 30 that are good.
Can I, can I suggest, and I hate to even say that, because that's going to add more work to me, I can go to the, to both the building department and to the, and to the assessor, get the titles and then the listing, the three categories, land, buildable, non-buildable, houses, and then this way we know what we have, and then we concentrate on the houses. Are they in good condition, bad condition? I mean, I saw some of them are in excellent condition, but that's, that's what we should.
The committee should determine that.
You know, we should, you know, I mean, we don't want to reinvent the, we want to, we want to create our own wheel here. We can, we can take examples from other cities, but we can't, you know, mimic them exactly, because our, our situation is unique, and I don't know how, what restrictions they're putting on all the properties. But that's why we have this committee up, that's going to get going on just as soon as we get this analyzed there.
Councilwoman Menelowski is next, and then Councilwoman Brian.
Yeah, I have a question. Do we have any idea how many of these homes are still occupied? Because last time we had the program, some of the people had to be evicted, they were still living in them.
The answer is no, but I did check on two that were supposed to be vacant, and myself and the building department went out there, and they were not vacant. So I don't know if it's squatter, or if it's, whatever the record was, I'm expecting a vacant house, and it's a beautiful house, but I.
See, I know, because last time we did this program, a couple of the investors had to come up with the exit plan and give them extra money just to get them out.
To get them out.
So can we make sure these properties are already cleared, so we don't have people coming in and buying them? Because these were investors, they, they knew what they were getting into possibly, so no big deal.
Right.
But I mean, if there's somebody living in there, you don't want to put just a regular person to walk in and say, oh, you're in my house, now I got to go through a, you know, month or a year eviction process.
Council Chair.
Hang on one second.
In response to what Councilwoman is saying, we have started eviction process on some of the homes that we, that we own, we, Don Dinnell's firm, we've started some legal action. There's one counter suing, but they were actually, they were put in a home, but with, I believe fraudulent. We owned a home, someone represented that they owned a home, and these people spent about $30,000 in different things have come up, so I'm not going to discuss further the case.
Sure, no, I've seen that happen.
But we are taking, we have started eviction processing on some of the homes, and we're also addressing, we've sent three, I know I've sent three homes over to Wayne County Prosecutor's Office that were our properties that were subject to fraud. So that's in process as well, I've worked with the assessor's office on doing that.
Yeah, because I know a situation where.
So what you told, you told me earlier, it does happen.
Hang on.
I know a situation where a homeowner knew they were going to go into foreclosure, so they left and bought another house and rented out their house for the last few months, and the people coming in thought they had one-year lease. Now they've got this eviction notice and threats of putting their furniture on the front lawn, and they had no clue that was even coming. They didn't know, so there's all kinds of scenarios out there.
The Wayne County Prosecutor's Office has a separate division to handle this, which we're in contact with, and we're working through our assessor's office on those issues.
Council Chair.
Just, before we go next, hang on, are you outside here, Councilwoman?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Councilwoman Brian, then Councilman Saab.
Yes, with us being the city, are, we're the seller, are we responsible for the points that are necessary with FHA and VA?
No.
Responsible, points, the points.
The points, you're talking about closing costs?
Yes.
Well, it's all, it's all built in, into the offer. First, we gotta determine if those homes qualify for VA and FHA. If they do qualify, it's all in the negotiation process and very common where they give you your price plus they add the cost in there. And right now, if the house are livable, Michigan, state of Michigan, matter of fact, they have $25,000 incentive for first time home buyers, as long as you don't haven't owned a house within the last three years and there's a limit in income. So they don't need anything, they can get $25,000, Michigan just to introduce that, $25,000. So you don't have to pay anything.
All right.
And to answer the question about who's gonna determine, I'm sorry, about those property, are they livable or not livable, I think anybody sells a property within the city of Dearborn Heights, they are required to have an inspection, the most qualified one. We're all qualified, but it would be the city inspector to walk to those property and determine and give a report what property, in their opinion, they're all professional, experienced, been in many, many properties, so they can answer that question and it would be a valid, really correct answer, what property could be rehabbed or what property is livable.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, Councilman. I'm trying to just, I'm calling because I have everything written down.
Councilman Sob is next.
Just to echo back to Roger, what law firm did we send these to?
We sent it to Don Denal, their law firm is working on our eviction processes, they work with us, obviously with our water collections.
But why can't the city's attorneys do the evictions?
What?
I mean, why can't we do the city eviction?
Because there's a lot of other issues involved in terms of the searches and things like that. You mean me?
Yeah.
Doing it? Well, there's certain things I refer out because of the expertise and the timing it takes on some of these processes, because an eviction takes a long time to do. And if that's what you wanna sit down with me and go through what I do, I have no problem doing that with you.
I think you just asked the question, guys, let's keep it respectful.
I'm answering.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
To answer some of the question about those squatters and from my experience in the last thirty six years, if a squatter comes in or establishes a lease and they have the license already living on the property and have utility on, they're no longer called squatter, you have to go through the process of eviction. Even if they created that lease and there's no way you can prove it otherwise, like you were mentioning about somebody got in there and foreclosed on their home, signed the lease, whether it was a valid or not valid lease, they're no longer a squatter. Once they show a license to a police officer or anybody that have mailing, living there, have utilities, you have to go through the eviction process.
Standing.
And there's incentive, yes. Do Freddie Mac and Fannie and City offer cash for keys? We do offer cash for keys, which I do it on a weekly basis where they give X amount of dollars, up to X amount max, where they turn the keys, but the house has to be broomed clean. Which a lot of owners, a lot of government, they figure it'd be a lot cheaper for them to pay the three grand or $2,500 versus evicting those people and get a bail off and go through the legal process. And if you offer them for that and let them clean it and move their stuff and broom clean the house, it's a lot cheaper than going through the process of eviction, cost wise and time wise.
Thank you so much.
It used to be a thousand dollars, not a 2,500.
It depends each bank, I could see it as high as 5,000.
Yes, squatter.
5,000 within the redemption, if you have still redemption right to redeem your property and you're not gonna redeem it, they'll say, we'll give you a five, you just walk away. So this way they know, but commonly two or three grand, that's what they offer, but you get the house broomed clean, it's gonna cost you more than that to do it.
No, no better way to do it than that.
Any other questions? I'm gonna open it up to the public now. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you.
And then if you wanna stick around, for those on Zoom or those on the public, if they wanna ask any questions regarding this city owned property from the presentation from both Mr. and Mr. Fayas.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a. Any questions? Please stop up, state your name, you have two minutes, please, hold on.
So just for, Blake Perry out on Fenton Street, so just a curious question, how does that work if you guys decide to give the property or work with an agency to get the property for a person with disability?
Is that a question for me or the council?
Um, I'm asking you.
Well, then the council would determine that, that's up to the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not us.
Okay, so my second question is how, how does the city work with somebody with a disability? Was that a?
If some, if the city, what is it?
Like, if the city has property, could they work with the person with a disability? Or is that a separate question?
So I can tell you, I believe we have a disability commission that's going to be on our next agenda, which we'll, we'll be discussing at the next city council meeting.
Okay.
That's a great question that you can bring up at the next city council meeting.
Okay, nevermind, thanks.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay.
Counselor Chair, I just wanted to recognize Blake Perry, he is one of the potential members of the Commission on Disability Concerns. He's a very knowledgeable resident in disability concerns.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, there we go, we got one. He's Angeles' favorite. His name is Vince Dzepkowski. Dzepkowski, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you got three minutes. Hold on, Vince, he's ready yelling.
I'm not yelling.
Go ahead, Vince.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Vince Dzepkowski, Columbia Street. Do you have the list of all these properties that are available that the city is going to attempt to get rid of or, or is that something that can be emailed to the public so we can go check some of these out?
Um, I don't believe that the way the addresses were sent to us were like properly sent to us, but I do believe that there are some in there that yes, maybe we can, I mean, I'm not sure, public record, they should be able to share to the public.
I don't have a problem with it, the problem I have, Counselor Chair, is that a lot of